Good evening. We'd like to begin our May meeting with Pledge Your Flag, please.
Let the Legion's flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will begin with our minutes and operating statements from last month.
I'll make a motion that we approve the April 2025 operating statements, April 28th, 2025 public hearing minutes, April 28th, 2025 council meeting minutes, May 12th, 2025 work session minutes, and quantum financial statements for April of 2025.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Noes. Motion's carried. Okay, we changed our agenda around a little bit tonight with our new council members coming in, so at this time we'll have our committee reports. We'll go with committee reports with our council that we have now. We'll start with Sherry and work around the table.
Okay. The only thing I had to report is there was a light that was reported out going contacting me this morning at the corner of East Broadway and Lightner, and I did report it, and I will leave this for the person that'll be taking over, just so they have a reference to the work order.
Okay.
Nothing else has been going on so far, so that's been very quiet at my end, so I would like to take this opportunity to thank everyone for allowing me this opportunity to serve as a councilperson. It's a very eye-opening experience, to say the least, but I'm going to be focusing fully on Dream Big Union Bridge, where I feel I can do a lot more for the town, so thank you all for trusting me with this position.
Thank you for being here for the last four years. Okay, Ellen?
Nothing new with the community center at this time.
Oh, okay, good.
The only thing I have is Guy Brothers is supposed to be here tomorrow to camera a section of sewer main under the crate that we believe is leaking. It's running our flows, hydraulic flow for the wastewater plant, and Jeff found some crawdads on the screen, so I do believe it's coming in and out of the stream.
Yeah. We got a bunch of them down at that central management plant.
That's all I have.
Okay, Laura?
So, on May 1st, I put together a basket to donate to the Union Bridge Fire Company's silent auction, which runs May 29th through the 31st. On May 7th, I requested a PIA for March and April, because I forgot March. Sorry, Kevin. I do twice the work in one day. On May 12th, I attended the work session, and then I have two announcements. The first one was we have our first free snow cone event of the summer, and it will be on Friday, June 13th, from 12 noon until 2:00 p.m., which is the last day of school for Carroll County. And we've received a donation from Heidelberg Materials for National Night Out, which will be held on Tuesday, August 5th, 2025, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And then I also need to make a motion for the fiscal year 2025-2026 Shriner Court budget for expenditures and revenues of $164,217.
Okay. Laura gave a report for the budget for Shriner Court, and the budget, she made a motion.
I'll second it.
We have a second. Are there any questions to Shriner Court budget?
I have to recuse myself.
Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Noes. Motion's carried. Okay. Is that all you have, Laura?
That's all I have, yes.
Amy?
I have nothing to report for streets. Just wanted to say it's been an honor and a privilege to work for the people of Union Bridge, and thank you for your faith in me.
But you're not gonna give up yet, because you still have another assignment yet. Thank you very much for your years of service. How many years?
Twenty-some. I don't know.
Well, if you've got 20, you have to give that to MML, so you haven't gone into Hall of Fame that, right? So we have to do that for you. So if you've got 20 years in, we'll get your information, we'll turn that in. It might be too late for this year, but we'll get it for next year. Okay, on the mayor's report, I have, just riding around town, we have a lot of people that have must forgot what a lawnmower was this year, because we have a lot of lawns in town that haven't been mowed, but appreciate that people would do that, so that we don't have to spend the time and everything in sending out registered letters to remind you to mow your grass, and then also, when you mow it, do not mow it out on the street into the gutters, keep it in your own properties, because when it goes out in the street, it just clogs up our drains. Lehigh did come down the last couple of weeks and sweep the streets for us, and they're trying to do that every week for us, like they always have done before, so let's hopefully that'll happen. The Carroll County chapter meeting, which is all the municipalities get together, our next meeting will be June the 12th. It's on a Thursday evening, and it'll be at the Shaladon Golf Course. Mount Airy is hosting it this year, so we do have that. And then, of course, next month, our council meeting will be early also, again, because the Maryland Municipal League Conference is the last week of June, so we'll be going to the conference. Anybody wants to go to the conference. So at this time, we're gonna let these young people be relieved of their duties, and we're gonna swear the new council people in. So if I have the new council people come forward to the microphone. Okay, raise your right hand, your name, or I'll use my name. I'm Perry Jones.
Aye.
Do swear and affirm to the case may, as the case may be.
Swear and affirm that is the case may be.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true alliance to the state of Maryland.
That I will bear true faithful alliance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will do the best of my ability and judgment.
And that I will do the best of my ability and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of the councilperson.
Execute the office of the councilperson.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
Congratulations. Of course, work with everyone.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Take your new seats, and if they want to get all the pictures they want to.
I haven't gone long.
I don't know how Joy's gonna appeal about me sitting next to her husband, though. I'm fine. I don't think I want to go home and tell him, Joy, I'm sitting next to you. Don't want her getting upset.
No, we've been keeping stuff separate from each other for a long time when it comes to conflicts.
Okay, at this time, we're gonna need motions on these things. I would like to reappoint Laura Conaway as president of the council, and we need a motion for that.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, that Laura Conaway will continue as president of the council. Are there any questions?
I will recuse myself.
Oh, okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Noes. Okay. Motion's carried. Thank you. Okay. Okay, Laura, we'll continue with the parking and police and parking and the Christmas lights. Hate to give up somebody to get in the middle of your street, your parking your Christmas lights for you. Logan, if I'm trying to give you a job that doesn't take a lot away from your work during the day, if you'd take up streetlights and, of course, they said sanitation or trash, but Sherry has done, she's got information of who to contact for streetlights. And Tony, we give you streets. You can take all the street complaints during the day. Donald's still around, so you can work with Donald on that. We get, every now and then, we get a Lehigh, not a Lehigh truck, we'll get a dump truck that'll drop a half a load of stone in the road, or a cement truck will come down through town sometime and blow off a couple hundred pounds of cement dust in the middle of the street, and you would have to, you'll get phone calls on that from time to time during the day. And Donald can tell you who to contact on that. Most time, there's a Lehigh number that you can contact somebody at Lehigh if it's dust, they'll come down. Depending on which dump truck drops a load of stone, like they have the last couple of months, a couple of different times, it was the trucking company that had to come in, got ahold of them, they came in and cleaned up their mess, that they think sometime the guy, when he goes to make a turn, he tries to lift his axle, and he hits the wrong button and hits the tailgate instead of axle. New driver, he's dumped stone in the road. That happened twice in one week, just a couple of weeks ago. I mean, a large amount of stone, so. So that will, that will keep you busy for a while. Okay. Next on our agenda is Mr. Tim Wright. I'm gonna come forward to the microphone, announce your name and your business here with us this evening.
Yes, I'm Tim Wright, with San Free Contracting. I'm here about 4714 Ladiesburg Road, and the easement thereof. I had the property laid out. I don't know if anybody got down the stakes are in now. I think they got them in just today, so they were working on it today. It shows the easement on the plat. I turned the plat in. I don't know if you've got a chance to look at that, and it shows the easement plainly on there. At this point, with the points that they put in, everything is on the property of 4714, except a portion of the driveway. The side parking goes over to the, into the easement, approximately two foot at the bottom and six foot at the top. So, in the deed, it states that the grantor, the town, has to grant permission, and that's the way it says in the deed, and I gave you a deed also, that they have to give permission for asphalt to be on that. There was previously concrete on it. I took that concrete out and put the asphalt down, but this came up when I tried to sell the house, that there was questions about that. So, what I'm asking for is permission for that bit of blacktop to be on that easement, because that's what it reads in the deed.
Right.
So that everything's good for the people that are in the body of that.
Yes. I saw it. I mean, Brett said he was there today and saw where the new stakes were, and...
It isn't a lot, but it is over in that easement.
Right.
And that's why I'm here. That piece of property belongs to the town, and the easement is in the deed for the house.
Right.
But those stakes, it has to have permission for that bottom half, and that's why I'm here today.
Yeah. That driveway has always been a mess. My, that house was originally built, was my cousin had built that house, and that driveway was always so narrow, and it's just...
Didn't look like they just got concrete from time to time.
And they put it in there, back in the day when that was built, back in, what, early 70s, late 60s. I remember when he built that house, so.
Yes.
And it was a very narrow driveway.
Yes, so right now, I guess what I'm asking for is that permission for that blacktop that's already on there.
Right.
So just so there isn't any questions when I sell the property.
Right. Well, I know Brett has, you have any?
I, look, I don't, I don't have a problem with it. We want a motion?
Yes.
Just for the town's information, is that the deed actually specifically reads, while it does say that the grantee will not pave the easement without the express permission of the grantor, number four says the grantee will not use or improve the easement area unless access to Ladiesburg Road is denied at the existing driveway as shown on exhibit one. Seems that the existing driveway was used as the driveway, so there's a little caveat to the permission portion of the deed, is that number four actually says that the easement will not be used unless the original driveway cannot be used. So, essentially... So that kind of trumps the permission portion of the pavement.
Right.
Of this particular deed, so.
Well, what I was given, that is, it was already paved. It was already concrete, although I didn't stick the concrete up, put the concrete on it, so it wasn't given to the people before.
Yeah. Apparently, when they built the house there, they put a driveway in there years ago, I guess back in the late 60s when they built the house, they went ahead and they put a driveway in there, and it was a concrete driveway, and it was already paved, and part of it was concrete. Where you come off the street, off of Ladiesburg Road, it was a concrete, but the rest of it was old pavement. I guess that was done when they built the house.
Okay. I just, I wanted to make that, bring that to your attention, that number four does, it just says that the easement shall not be used essentially by the grantee unless it is needed.
Right.
For the purpose of that. That's what the purpose of the easement was for, was for the ingress and egress.
Right.
Of the property owner.
Okay.
See, that's what I remember there. It's their driveway, their property doesn't actually touch Ladiesburg Road there.
Right.
Soon, we granted this easement for the driveway at that point, because they didn't, they couldn't legally go across the existing driveway because of that. Now, I assume that's why that language was put in there.
Right.
Because whoever owns this, I guess, could deny them. Not sure who owns that.
I don't believe they can, but you can tell that.
Yeah.
It's been in there for 60 years.
Right.
It would be legally, they couldn't.
So...
I'm not an attorney, but...
So that front part actually doesn't, that work comes off of Ladiesburg Road, that is actually, is that the county's, or is that?
That's part of the farm below, I believe.
Dave Buffington, Dave Buffington used to be the Shriner property.
Yes.
Hard lodging. Because it goes in front and behind.
The way I see it on that property, that property was cut from the same property that the town has, not from the Shriner. If you look at the property, that's the way it was cut out.
Yeah.
Or they wouldn't have done it.
Yeah.
They've a little bit of a driveway.
Yeah.
It's all this.
Leukality.
Was that garage added?
Excuse me?
Was the garage added?
No.
No.
No, that's always been there.
That was on there then?
I actually shrunk some of the concrete that was on there. The sidewalk was there.
Yeah.
But the back piece of it, I made it a little bit smaller. I pulled it all out because it had reverse grade to it. It was falling towards the house.
Right.
The water came towards the house. I took it all out and we did it. It's actually smaller than it was before.
Because years ago, I remember they had a problem with the water that run down off the hill, ran down, and...
It had negative grade to it, which...
And run underneath of that culvert pipe underneath that driveway. Years ago, they had problems with that.
So, Mandy, what you're saying is, is we cannot grant them access, or cannot allow that blacktop to be on the easement, is what you're saying?
I'm saying that the deed of easement that is currently between the town of Union Bridge and the property is for egress and ingress, which is not happening here. That, the part of that easement is not there, so I don't think that the easement, as it was written, can be used for the purpose of granting permission of pavement to be on there, because it's not used for the purpose that it was supposed to be used for. Now, I'm not saying that the town can't do something else.
Right.
But I think that for the purpose of this deed of easement, I don't think that the town can proceed in that manner as just granting permission of it because of the way that it's written.
Okay, so how would we redo that?
I think that, I mean, we could, the property, I mean, I know that the town went through this before, but, I mean, potentially, that portion of the property could potentially be sold to, and be added on to the deed.
Easement was sold.
I under...
Money exchanged hands for the...
Right, right, but I think that for the easement purposes, that this easement purpose, as far as what I'm reading, was for that purpose, is for ingress and egress, which that's not used as a driveway.
Three, four, nine acres.
Yeah.
That's what I read. I agree with you. And also, that it was there before I purchased the house, that driveway went over into that, and it had pavement and everything on that side, over into the easement. When I took it out, I just put it into blacktop.
Unless the town, I mean, we could go the route of saying that potentially that one portion, if you look on the BPR, that one portion of the driveway that, I guess, belongs to another property owner, that we keep this easement for the purpose of the ingress and egress, should that property owner, now I'm not saying that there's, you know, any legality, you know, about taking that back, but should that driveway, there be a dispute about the driveway coming out on some other person's land, that the town could keep that easement and grant permission for that and just keep it the way it is, potentially.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions on that? I mean...
So, number three says that the grantee will not pave the easement without an express permission of the grantor, but the easement area is for the use and common of the grantor and grantee and their respective successors and his son, and it was granted for ingress, egress, and regress to and from the aforementioned part property in Ladiesburg Road. So the easement was granted for a driveway.
For that specific purpose.
Right.
That's...
So, it's just kind of silly that, what we're saying is, is they can't put, they can't use it unless they can't, unless they can't cross that other property to get into their property. I just, I see what you're saying, and it, and it does say it's denied. See, they cannot use or improve the easement area unless access to Ladiesburg Road is denied, the existing driveway. So how do we get around this? I mean, seriously, it was...
And it's not all the way, I'm not coming in from the road, you know, it's just kind of like a second parking spot there.
Right. So, do you have, yes.
Turnaround.
At the bottom, it's over two foot, like they're from the road, and it's over six foot into the easement.
I, I...
It's not taking no easement or anything like that, but I don't know if that matters or not.
It's a language thing here that we have to, we have to figure out how to get around.
Overcome. That's, that's the problem, is that's what I'm saying, is that as this deed is written, it's...
And how do we keep it to match for the new owners in the future?
That's what it is.
Right.
They're questioning that, and, I mean, the worst-case scenario would cut that piece of driveway off, for me.
I think that's worst-case scenario for the town.
But see, all of this, you know, ever since they've had that property.
You know, if I'm going to court, you know, over dispute of this, that would be, I would say, you need to take that up, you know, if I'm... But I under, I, you know, I understand, I think, I don't think anybody wants to see that happen. It's just a matter of how do we...
Maybe if they can't cross it.
Make it so that...
I just think it's...
But with the language that's in there, I don't understand.
Yeah, that's, that's the, that's the only part, is that it's the language that's in there, and if, I mean, maybe we need to, maybe I need to do a little bit of research on this and figure out a way that we can kind of make everybody happy.
Isn't it maybe where he, he didn't change the footprint?
Mm-hmm.
That was there, existing, so it was kind of grandfathered.
Yeah.
With the concrete. Is there anything like that?
Easements aren't, easements aren't grandfathered.
They, they used it for 30 years, like that.
But that's, but that's because...
It didn't come up when I, when they did total search for everything, they took it underground. It didn't come up when I bought it. When I went to sell it, it came up, and it was a problem.
Right. Well, I can't imagine, I mean, most title companies, and I said it to Dawn, most title companies probably wouldn't, because they're not looking at it as being paved or anything. It's just an easement that was granted for a purpose of a driveway, essentially.
Yeah.
I guess I should, right? But I read it one way, and I thought it was okay, but...
Yeah, I don't, you know, unfortunately, when it comes to easements, there is no adverse possession with that, and there's no adverse possession when it comes to the local municipalities. It's different between private property owners. So I think we just need to maybe look at this from a different perspective and see if we can come up with something that...
A solution, yeah.
A solution that we can solve everything altogether, and maybe fix this for title purposes going forward.
Yes.
But I don't think, it's not gonna be as easy as just granting permission.
Okay.
That's, that's my opinion, and my advice to the town, is that it's not that easy.
So with that, and because it's a request, we usually have the person sign a cost of liability. So whatever Mandy's charges are, in order to do this, you would pay the town back for it, and I would have to have you sign that. If this is the way, if you want her to look into it and change it so that it goes down the line, that's what, the way we normally do it, unless, I mean, I don't know if they can forgive that or not, but I don't think that that's the way we would do it.
I think it would be on the, the property owner. And I, unfortunately, I just, I don't know what, what the cost is going to be for this, but I mean, I can kind of look into this and give it an estimate of what I believe the cost could be, after I kind of figure out what the best path forward is.
How long will it take?
Depends on where I have to go. I, I have to...
They have to cut it off.
Yeah. I have, I have to, I have to research this, because I am not 100% sure of the best path to get, you know, is it, you know, reconstructing a new deed of easement for the town, you know, and that, you know, that could be it.
We can, especially if they settle with, the last one didn't settle.
Because of this.
This problem that come up. And I'm not saying those people were looking for a way out, because it seemed to me they were looking for a way out.
Yeah.
And that was a crack they sent in, seeing, and they jumped through it, but it may come up again. Well, they will come up again, because when you do, real estate goes to the next one. Why didn't they settle? It's not the open book, so it's already in, they're well aware of. But I'm only selling, selling my piece of property, so I work cases to cut the blacktop off.
And that may be the most cost-effective for you in this.
Well, I mean, I'd like to see if that will work or if it won't, but it's just probably a timeframe, or settlement, this next settlement is the night, I believe.
Do you think that you could maybe by the end of the week, either say whether you have something or you don't?
Yep, I can do that by the end of this week.
Yeah, that would be fine. I just gotta have something for when we go to settle, what am I doing? And I've made it quite clear to them that, with that property layout from BPR, that, you know, this is what you're buying. Here's the line, that's why I marked the line, so you can see, that's it. I'm not trying to sell the easement or anything like that. I mean, it's really clear to them already, and they understand it, I believe.
And I'm assuming the title company is only having the problem that it's been paved. Is that, is that what they're coming back with?
Yes, because it's paved into the easement, and that's a no-no, you know?
Right, okay.
And I do understand that.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I can have something by the end of this week.
Why don't you, if you mind coming back out, I would wait to sign anything until she...
We know, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Can you just stop back up, go over to the table, show them yours?
Um, you can either, he'll have it before Friday, right?
Yeah.
Stop at Friday. I'll be good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll get down to Mandy's report, then.
I have near new business.
Busy enough, right? Okay, all right. Kevin, you're up.
All right, I have a rather quick one tonight, too. It's about easy, but quick. Between April 28th and May 19th, 2025, the Carroll County Sheriff's Office received 32 calls within the town of Union Bridge. Others called for service, too, were found to be reportable. On May 2nd, 2025, at 6:46 p.m., a theft was reported on East Locust Street. The complaint advised that $1,500 was pulled from his checking account and transferred to another account not belonging to him, to them. This case is open for further investigation. On May 4th, 2025, at 4:56 p.m., a suspicious activity was reported in the 100 block of South Main Street. A vehicle was found with two complainants inside, or two occupants inside, and this was later found to be a vehicle collision after further investigation. That case was closed. And that concludes my report. Rather quick one this month. Still, crime trends throughout, yeah, the crime, that is good, but crime trends throughout the county tend to be frauds and thefts, so everybody be vigilant. If there's something suspicious that comes in the mail, or you get a... something suspicious that comes in the mail, or you get a suspicious email, or, like I mentioned before, solicitors door to door, obviously, always do a multi-factor authorization type deal, with, always double check and get a second ping in, and, uh, don't just lean on it and, and go forward with it, so, yep, that's pretty much all I got.
Okay.
But New Windsor Carnival's coming up, and then I, I know the week after that, we're gonna have the Union Bridge Carnival, right? And, um, that's gonna be, what, Friday, Saturday, Sunday? I believe it's Fri-, or, not Sunday.
Thursday, 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 Friday, Saturday, yes.
Yeah, and I knew it was three days, and, um, so look forward to seeing everyone out there. Um, yeah, that's pretty much all I got.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, public comments and concerns? Anybody? Front and center, please, state your name, and, you know, I'm just kidding.
I'm Sherri Thompson. I just wanted to, on behalf of Dream Big Union Bridge, we are really busy these days, so wanted to let everybody be aware, and you've probably seen the signage, that we are going to be starting a farmer's market. Um, it's gonna run every Saturday from nine to, starting June seventh, room, November first. So, we are struggling getting vendors, but we've been told that Sykesville started with, like, one or, one to three vendors, so it's gonna be a slow process, but we're gonna keep on, keep it on, because that's what we do. So, come out and support that. We've also extended the time to two P.M. because the feedback we've gotten is a lot of people, they're closing up after people get done with their, um, ballgames and stuff like that, so we thought, well, we'll stay open to accommodate that. Our largest fundraiser, which most of you are aware of, is our Rubber Duck Derby, it's a seven annual, and this year we're gonna have live entertainment, we're gonna have two bands, we're going to have adult beverages, we are going to have, um, two uniform deputies at the event, just to make sure that everything stays only up and up. This is all providing that that, uh, rain stops raining.
It's foggy down there.
And we have a rain date, um, in July, so, and at this time, I would like to ask, we are gonna have raffles, if the town would be willing to donate a basket for our raffle. We are, what I'm trying to do is get one that's, all the municipalities in Carroll County, and everyone has committed so far, uh, just, I'm waiting your back in Tawny Town, Sykesville.
Yeah, we'll put you a basket, something together.
Okay.
We got a lot of farmers around here that had cleaned out their hog pins yet, we'll get something together.
We'll take it, we'll take it, we'll turn it into gold, because that's what we do.
It is, it is gold.
Yeah, so, um, on that same note, I'm gonna brag a little bit about Dream Big. Um, I don't know how many have seen it, but Carroll Magazine had a twenty twenty-five Reader's Choice Awards, and I am very proud to say that the charity event that won was Dream Big Union Bridge Rubber Duck Derby. Second place was the Peep Show. I think that is just phenomenal.
Wow, that's great.
I am just so glad you're seeing us up. Also, our gift shop, we were the winner of Vintage slash Fresh Shop, so again, something, you know, kudos, because they're starting to know that Union Bridge is here. And on that same note, while I'm tooting our horn, we, Dream Big was, um, is gonna be presented an award at the We Are Carroll Awards, um, it's called Inspiring Growth Rooted in the Community, and this is awarded to an organization that has been in existence for seven years of continual operation, and as a fund of the community foundation of Carroll County. Um, we have continued and have significant impact on the community within the perimeters of our intended mission, and consistency meets and exceeds the defined mission, and what made us stand out is the fact that we raise all of our own money, we do not rely on the bridge, like a lot of nonprofits do. So I just wanted to kind of toot our horn, because we've been really working hard, and people are starting to notice it, so.
That's great, thank you.
June seventh, come out to the duck derby, and you can go online to Union Bridge, dreambigunionbridge.com, and check out the website, and you can purchase your ducks, and get any information you want about the farmer's market and or the duck derby. And the other thing we're gonna start doing, so you can spread the word, is we're gonna try to do, like, a little interview thing, um, every month, like, I think, like, three times a week, I think is what we're thinking we're gonna do, where we're gonna go out and video different nonprofits, and any businesses that have something going on, that we can share that weekly, so people know what's going on in Union Bridge, to help bring traffic into Union Bridge, so, we're taking it, we're, we're brewing leaps and bounds, so.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Okay, any other community concerns, comments? Well, I'll give the one for the fire company then, is their PIO. Uh, like I said, Union Bridge Carnival is made to twenty-ninth, thirtieth, and thirty-first. Uh, also, on May the twenty-sixth, which is on Memorial Day, the VFW is having their Memorial Day service. It'd be at six o'clock in front of the VFW, providing there's no rain. If it rains, I think they're gonna take it inside, but it will be Memorial Day the twenty-sixth. Uh, the Union Bridge Fire Company's, uh, entertainment, on Thursday night, they have bootleg that's gonna be there. On Friday night, it'll be a band called Half Serious, and on Saturday night, it's a band called Twenty Dollar Profit, so that's their entertainment for this, uh, year's carnival. Uh, they do have raffle tickets out. Uh, the raffle tickets this year is two dollars a ticket, three for five, and there's three prize, there's three drawings on each ticket. We had some pretty good donations this year from some organizations in Westminster and all for the raffle, so the raffle tickets are out. Uh, they are planning on having a bingo bash, I think it's sometime toward the end of July, if they sell, it's, it's August, I think, first of August, sometime, if they sell enough tickets, it's a, it's a hundred dollars, it's a all-day afternoon bingo thing, which a lot of work, a lot of time, so spending our whole day over there for that, just so everybody know what fire companies got going on, so, things that's, then after that, it's gonna be pretty quiet until, like, September, when they start bingos and all the other activities again, so we'll get a little bit of a break this summer, hopefully. Um, anyone else with comments, concerns?
Oh, I have a concern.
Okay.
I just have a concern about the businesses on Main Street, with the one business being closed, all the flower pots are full of nothing but weeds, and it's coming down the sidewalk and everything, and I don't know if there's something that we can do to get them to clean that up, because it's kind of...
We can, we can ask, we can ask the business owner to do it, if not, uh, in your spare time, go over and pull some weeds.
And you'll make a donation for me?
No, no.
I'm all about donations, or we just want the town to look bad?
We just want the town, that's what I was saying about people mowing their grass, and uh...
I mean, it is, it's just getting bad under control, and I just want to...
Yeah, you know, we, we get some volunteers to go pull some weeds there, I know their, their flower boxes are looking bad, and...
It is.
But they haven't been there to look at their property, you know. Legally, we can't go in somebody else's flower box, you can as a citizen, the town can't, unless we give them notice, send them a letter, and then if they don't do it, then we have to do it, you know, it's just a, but being a good neighbor...
Good money after bad.
Yes, a good neighbor, being a good neighbor can do it, and not that much of a problem.
Well, that's part of what we're thinking about, though, so.
Yeah. I did have a phone call, uh, I guess it was Friday evening, from, uh, a West Broadway residence, that him and his wife had been gone for a few days, they came home, and they were talking about some of the neighbors' trucks down there, sitting there with brush and debris on it, they're sitting there, hadn't been moved for a long time, and we've had gone through this West Broadway deal for so many years that we had given up on it. It's, it's not worth our time to go down there and try to get people that don't move their vehicles for time and time again. We've taken the one gentleman to court a long time ago, we had an ordinance that said you can't leave it set there for longer than seven days, and the gentleman that's complaining used to take and move his car up a foot, when the town moves up, he'd move it back, remember that doing? And we went through that deal just so he didn't have to move his vehicle off the street, so, at that time, we give up on that end of the street, I'm sorry, it used to be one of the nicest streets in this town, but there are people have moved there that don't give a hoot, and they just let it go, and it's a shame that they let it happen like that, but it's, it's the clientele there, not, not everybody on that street, but it's some of the people that live there...
Well, thank you.
...caused a problem, no. We know, everybody knows who it is.
It's my industry.
But, you know, it's not, we can't keep spending good dollars, sending out and taking the gentleman to court down there all the time and losing, and it's, it's a couple of, you know, the one gentleman has a truck there, that he puts debris on it, and the trucks was set there for two or three months at a time, and he's got a backyard he can put his truck in.
Lita is monitoring it more.
But, I mean, you know, she goes down, she marks, marks the pavement and everything, and then people get upset, you know, but it's, you know, how much money do we want to spend of your tax dollars for people that don't care? So that's what you have to decide, it's your tax dollars that we're spending money for. We have, you know, another gentleman has a trailer on the street, he knows he's illegal with the trailer, and Ellen's marked it, and we give them tickets, just how far do we want to keep spending your money? So it's, it's up, people want our town to look good, and they should come off and give a little effort theirself, you know, we can't, you know, you guys are, you'll, you'll see when you start riding around town, we've got, you know, I, I rode around for the last several weeks, and we just got people that haven't even mowed their grass yet this year, and this looks terrible, and, you know, and then we have to send them a letter, and they don't mow it, then we have to send them a registered letter, then if they don't mow it, then we hire a contractor to go in and mow it, then it goes on their tax bill, but then, you know, sometimes you go on somebody's grass, property, mow their grass, and better have Kevin next door, because they could get a little rowdy, but it, it's...
A little citation, too, more than...
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, it's just, it's a shame that, you know, people move here, and they don't take care of their properties and mow their grass, it doesn't take, you know, a little bit of time to mow their grass, but hopefully it'll get better, so, we just have to do what we can. Uh, our next work session will be June the ninth, our next council meeting, like I said, will be June the sixteenth, because we'll be a week early next month also, because of a conference in Ocean City, and if there's no further business, we're in line for adjournment.
We'll make a motion we adjourn the meeting?
I'll second that.
Are there any questions? Are there none, all those that favorize?
Aye.
No's, motion's carried, and thank you, we'll see you next month.